All right. Good evening, everybody. The time is still seven o'clock. Aaron barely made it in under the wire. Thank you, everybody. We're officially going to call this meeting to order. And Deb, would you kindly do your roll call?
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Hancy.
Here.
Counsel Perser, Counsel Parish. Counsel Downs.
Here.
Counsel Miller.
Present.
Great, thank you. I'm going to ask that everybody stand up for a moment of silence to collect your thoughts, and then we'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
My pledge of allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unites all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before us, we have an agenda, and I would like to amend the agenda as it is presented. At the, this would be after Section 10, Council Reports and Actions, I'd like to move into executive session for discussion on personal matters, specifically the process for hiring a new city manager. If we can, we've never done amended agenda, so I'm not sure if that's the right process.
That would be the correct process. You'd need a council member to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add that in, and going to be a stickler, you got to read the whole kit and caboodle as to statutory reference. Yes, but it, but Mayor, but Mayor, it does need to be a council member making the motion.
Okay.
Okay, I move to approve.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I also have an amendment to the agenda.
Oh.
No.
Since it went out on Friday, staff needed to add in the resolution under quasi judicial public hearings for finding the property eligible for annexation, the CARP annexation. We just accidentally left it out, but it was added in, and the council packet was resent out yesterday.
Okay, so some clarification then. Since that, Deb, was that amended agenda then reposted yesterday?
Correct.
So you don't need to amend the agenda to add that because it was already added and posted to the public. So the resolution is part of the agenda as presented tonight. So you just need to move to amend the agenda to add that executive session.
I move to amend the agenda to add the executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024F, L or I, I'm not sure, for discussing personal matters, specifically the process for hiring a new city manager and pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding the same. Second.
First and second. Okay. Can we please?
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Parish, Counsel Downs, and Counsel Miller.
Yeah.
Motion passes six zero.
So now you have an amended agenda, and you now need to vote to approve the same.
All right.
I move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Counsel Perser. Counsel Parish.
Yes.
Counsel Downs. Counsel Miller. Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you for keeping us on track on the proper way to do that. We have no proclamations and presentations this evening, so we're going to open it up to public participation. This section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. Generally, the city council will not discuss the issues. It will not take an official action under this section of the agenda. We asked that everybody limit their comments to three minutes, and if you come up, if you could kindly state your full name and your address, would greatly be appreciated. Is there anybody that would like to partake in public participation? All right, seeing none, going to close public participation. Next, we have consent agenda. These are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to, agreed to or met prior to the time they come before the council for final action. These items will be approved by a single motion of the council. Members of the council may ask that an item be removed from the consent section and fully discussed. All items not removed from the consent section will then be approved. A member of the council may vote no on a specific item without asking that they be removed from the consent section for full discussion. Any item that is removed from the consent agenda will be placed at the end of the regular agenda. So I would like to also open this up to the public. If anybody would like to comment on any item on the consent agenda, now would be your chance. Once again, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and please state your name and full address. Is there anybody that would like to speak on an item on the consent agenda? Great. Thank you very much.
Tessa Bynum, 255 North Ash Street, Anfretta. I want to talk about the minutes from August 20th meeting that are on the agenda. So I want to draw attention. Oh, sorry, I just ran up those stairs.
It's so high. It's something.
So I want to draw attention to the, to a couple discrepancies in the minutes from the meeting on the 20th. During the consent agenda of that meeting, myself, Deb Woods, Mayor Breman, or Breman, I'm sorry.
That's all good.
And Councilmember Williams all had comments about something on the consent agenda. And there is no mention of the mayor's comments in the exchange that happened on the minutes. And I think that it is really important to have the whole story documented for accuracy purposes, because I don't think a lot of people know that you can watch it on YouTube. And so if you pull up the minutes, there's not the whole story there, and so that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak? All right. Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation on the consent agenda and open it up to council. I actually have a question on what the process is, or something when somebody has a comment about the minutes and what is the normal course of action.
Sure, so I think in this instance, for you guys to have a discussion about the minutes, or take a look at that, go ahead and pull that off the consent agenda, because, and it'll be a standalone motion. And then I was going to point out some clarification. So if somebody wants to move to pull the, excuse me, pull the minutes from August 20th off the consent agenda.
Can we get more clarification before that? About what specifically is missing? Because there is Mayor Breman's.
Well, that's what I was going to, that's what I was going to talk about. I don't, sorry, don't engage with the.
No, I'm just wondering if we can ask for clarification.
Well, in order to have that discussion, I'd prefer you, you need to pull it off the consent agenda, and then we can talk about it.
I move to pull the minutes from August 20th meeting off of the consent agenda.
Second. Any other questions or comments about the consent agenda?
I just want to get a quick clarification answer. So the PPP, the extension, that is just to extend through 12324, correct? Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda with the understanding that we are removing item A off and will be discussed separately?
Counsel Perser.
There needs to be a motion.
I moved to accept the consent agenda items with the one item, the August 20th minutes removed.
Second.
First and second. Could you kindly poll council?
Counsel Perser, Counsel Parish.
Yes.
Counsel Downs, Counsel Miller.
Yeah.
Counsel Williams, Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Great. So help us walk through this process of, we've removed item A off the consent for continuous discussion. And I believe, Mary Elizabeth, you wanted to add some clarification.
Sure, and so first off, if ever, in general, any, any member of council believes there's also an error in minutes, you can always take those off because we can amend them in the meeting and adopt them as amended. So just wanted to put that out there as a reminder. And I believe Shannon just pointed this out to me on page nine. Do you have a copy of the minutes with you or access to them? Okay, just because I want to make sure we are talking about the.
Apples to apples.
Apples to apples. But I believe at the top of page nine of the minutes, which is page 12, the packet, there is a paragraph discussing the mayor's comments. And I, again, it's not typical to engage with the public, but I believe that's the piece we were.
That's not, that is not what you're addressing.
Right, I think it kind of puts us in a hard spot if somebody's got a concern about a section of the minutes, but we can't ask.
This to the, to the next meet, like, does this have to be just?
It doesn't have to be tonight. And the other thing I was going to ask, you know, Mayor, since this was your, these were your comments, you know, if you read that paragraph, if you feel that that, and this would be true for anybody, you guys, when you're reviewing the minutes, since a lot of this obviously are your words, to make sure that they're accurate.
My question is, I'm referenced a number of times in the minutes. Is there any way to get clarification from somebody that says, here's where I think was misrepresented? Or didn't reflect on what was actually discussed? Because otherwise, then it's like, then I, you know.
Well, that's why I was pointing you to page nine of the minutes, the first paragraph.
I guess I would like a point of clarification now that we have the city attorney here. I do what's called summary minutes, which means that I don't necessarily include every single word that has been spoken at a council meeting. So I just wanted to say they're not verbatim.
Thank you for showing that, because I thought you said page, page twelve. Right, but it says nine. I was looking at a different page nine.
Oh, sorry.
Because there's nine at the bottom, and that's why I was getting confused, like, this doesn't look.
No, I'm sorry. I apologize. Nine of the minutes.
Okay, right. Thank you. Well, you can understand the confusion. I was looking at the other page nine.
So if you would like to open this matter up to receive additional public comments, since it's now been pulled off as a standalone, you can, you can do that.
I would like to do as much.
All right, then with that, yes, let's, let's open this up.
Can you clarify for us?
For clarification of your concern on this.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Ironically, when we were having this discussion at the last meeting, your comments were to say that we don't do this, and that was not mentioned in the minutes. So your comments were to say that we don't engage during, like, when people come up and stand and talk.
You say generally, we do not.
Yeah, but that's what you said. You said, like, this isn't open for discussion. We're, we don't typically engage with the public.
And that's what's missing.
And there's no mention of that in the minutes. And I feel like that's really important to get the whole story.
That's why I was explaining.
Is this, I guess, that statement is made at, always as part of the agenda when public comments are opened. For items not on the agenda, the, the mayor reads the statement that says there, they don't, the council does not engage with the public about them or respond directly at that time. So that's actually on the agenda. And the mayor does read that before a public comment each time. So I think, you know, it's up to the council. If you believe there is something, you know, if you believe that that statement was made separately and apart from the agenda, the other thing we can do is you can ask Deb to re-watch the meeting again, and if you feel that's important to, you know, clarify or add in, you can move this to another meeting to.
It every time before we do it. I mean, that is our standard policy and it gets read at every single meeting.
Right.
I, I think we're covered under that.
So, yeah, it's.
So much for the clarification.
So that being said, should we reinstate the consent agenda item then so that we don't have to put it on a later?
No, what you can do, you can go ahead.
Do it right now.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
You can go ahead right now.
Vote on this right now.
You can go ahead and vote on this item now to approve the minutes as presented.
I move to approve the minutes from August 12th, or 20th, sorry.
As presented.
As presented.
Thank you.
There we have a first, Amy is our second, or Andrea, sorry.
Second.
There's a second. All right, any other questions or comments from council? All right, Deb, would you kindly poll council?
Counsel Parish, Counsel Downs.
Yes.
Counsel Miller, Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Hancy, Counsel Perser, motion passes six zero.
Great. Next, we're moving to Section 7. We have a quasi judicial hearing regarding Resolution 2024-26, a resolution of Fruta City Council finding approximately 53.59 acres of property located at 958 17 and a half road and adjacent to 17 and a half road right of way, eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta, which is known as the CARP annexation, and City Planner Henry Hempel will present. Henry, you've got the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a resolution to determine whether or not the 54 acres is eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta. First step in the annexation process is to adopt a resolution to set a public hearing date to determine whether or not property is eligible to be annexed into the city. The city of Fruta, the city council adopted a resolution 2024-22, adopting a resolution determining, or setting a hearing date to determine the eligibility of annexation at a hearing that set today's date. After that meeting, we're required by state statute to initiate legal notice for four consecutive weeks in the local newspaper. That was done in the Daily Sentinel on August 14th, 21st, 28th, and September 4th, skewing up the legal notice for this meeting in addition to the resolution that was passed on a, a council meeting item. So with that resolution and determining whether or not a piece of property can be annexed into the city has to do with contiguity and whether or not the, the subject property is within our urban growth boundary. Currently, this subject property, the 54, 50 acres, is located within our urban growth boundary and does have at least one-sixth contiguity with the existing city limits. The contiguity, according to the annexation map, was it, which is a boundary survey, is 2,241.42 feet of contiguity with the existing city limits. So existing city limits, everything that's already in the city of Fruta. And so that's the one-sixth contiguity requirement that we need to resolve or review in order to get to a positive recommendation to the city council. And that's in accordance with state statute or Colorado revised statute 31121041A. This presentation is short and sweet. Get into kind of the, the details about our comp plan and others when it comes time to discuss the ordinance, which is on the agenda and follows this presentation. With that said, Mr. Mayor, staff does recommend approval of Resolution Number 2024-26, a resolution of the Fruta City Council finding approximately 53.59 acres of property located at 958 17 and a half road and adjacent 17 and a half road right of way, eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta, and that is found in council packet on page 118. And with that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I'd like to bring it back to council. Five thirty meetings are going to be a little rough. We're going to get used to this. Any questions?
First, Mayor, you do need to open this item up for public comment.
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much. Now that Henry's gone through this, we'd like to open it up to the public for any public comment. Once again, three minutes. Going to have to ask, state your name and full address.
I'm going to come up with a cool name and change it just for this. Tessa Bynum, 255 North Ash Street. So I would like to better understand how the Planning and Development Department staff report states on the last page under staff recommendations that the annexation application meets the requirements of the section 171750A of the Fertile Land Use Code when it is not in accordance with the numbers five or nine in that section. So number five says the development is consistent with community goals, principles, and policies as expressed in the Fruta Comprehensive Plan. And nine says the area meets or can meet the existing infrastructure standards set forth by the city. So in that, the Fertile Land Use Code of 174110 states that all streets in the city of Fruta must meet the design criteria and construction specification manual, which states that roads must be 44 feet wide. The plans for the development on the CARP land is set to be 30 feet wide. And then in February of 2022, the city council adopted the Fertile Circulation Plan, which states that all residential streets, including the existing ones, should be 44 feet wide and have 10 to 11 feet of travel lanes in each direction. So that is my proof. That is my question. Thank you.
And counsel, I, those comments are very relevant to the ordinance as to whether it meets the criteria, and right now you're considering the resolution as to whether it just is able to be annexed.
Any other, would anybody else like to come up and speak? All right, hearing none, we're going to close public participation and bring it back to council. Okay, so once again, we're just discussing the annexation.
Eligibility for annexation.
I love when you're at the meetings.
Mr. Mayor, I have moved to approve Resolution 2024-26, resolution of the Fruta City Council finding approximately 53.59 acres of property located at 958 17 and a half road and adjacent 17 and a half road right of way eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, would you kindly poll council?
Counsel Downs.
Yes.
Counsel Miller, Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Hancy, Counsel Perser, and Counsel Parish.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Now, we're going to move on to the second quasi judicial hearing. This is ordinance 2024-15, second reading and ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Fruta by zoning approximately 53.59 acres of property located at 958 17 and a half road to South Fruta Residential Zone, Carpree Zone. And once again, Henry Hempel, our city planner, is going to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. One kind of statement of clarification, because the quasi judicial and the legislative balance in the agenda are set. We do really need to talk about the ordinance 2024-14, kind of first, kind of flip flop. It doesn't change any of kind of the discussion items that you need to have tonight as a council with the public and staff. But I think just order of operations wise, it does, it's a little confusing on our agenda because the zoning is quasi judicial and in the legislative. So I'll go through both together because there's some redundancy in the presentation and the information to, to give and present to you all and the public tonight. But I'd like to talk about the annexation part first, have a discussion on that. As, you know, we've had public participation on the other one, so I can kind of answer some of those questions that pertain to the annexation and then discussion of, of the zoning. Because in accordance with state statute, we are required to zone property within 90 days, so it doesn't have to happen concurrently, although it's a lot cleaner process. It's, you know, legal notice is, you know, applicable to that, so. With that said, this is a presentation on the ordinance 2024-14. It's a second reading of this ordinance for the CARP annexation. So land use application 24-24-04. The current property is located in AFT or is located in the county, which is the reason for annexation. It contains 53.59 acres. And the app, the property owners have all signed the annexation petition, which is required by state statute as a voluntary annexation eligibility requirement, because we don't have to go to a vote to annex property. Legal notice, this is supposed to happen in accordance with our land use code and state statute for the annexation part, part of it, excuse me. This is required to happen within 15 days of the planning commission's meeting to discuss annexation and zoning. This happened, the postcards, there's a clip of the postcard and what it says. And then there's a buffer zone, which is 350 foot radius around the subject property where we invite members of the public to participate if they have comments or questions or concerns about a, a land use application. We also do a legal notice posting on the property. We have two legal notice postings in this photo right here, one for the annexation and one for the zone. Again, running the applications concurrently just helps with transparency. This is head publicly, we're doing a process about incorporating or annexing property into the city and zoning it at the same time. And you're welcome to attend this meeting if you do choose to or provide written public comments to the city. Postcards were sent out on July 19th, sign posting happened on July 22nd, and a posting in the Daily Sentinel happened on July 24th. Here's an existing zoning map of the, of the cart property there in the middle with the lake kind of on the south side. And you can see Adobe Fall or Adobe View North, Red Rocks, and then some other South Fruta residentially zoned properties to the north, the west, and the east. Our future land use map, this is a major component of our comp plan and the decisions that we, in the recommendations that we make and the decisions you make as a city council that we use on a daily basis as staff. On the left, this is a larger footprint of our comprehensive plan showing future boundaries or current boundaries in our future land use map, FLUM is the acronym we use. And then next to that is kind of a zoomed in picture of that, showing the location of the subject property. It is within our urban growth boundary and has been for many years before this 2020 comp plan. It was in the prior comprehensive plan as well. So as we look at the review criteria in Section 1717050A, we need to consider five criteria. The major one, I think, you know, in, in my opinion, is the one-sixth contiguity. If it's not contiguous with the existing city limits, and again, is not within our urban growth boundary, we would not be here tonight talking about an ordinance to incorporate and put property in the city limits. So these must be met. They're the first two that, that need to be considered, and they, they have been met. Can this property be served with city services or other municipal services? The property is already served by our police department in our agreement with Mesa County. It's already served with the Lower Valley Fire Department. There's a 10-inch sewer main that goes, that bisects the property in the Carp Avenue alignment, which is I and a half road. This is proposed to be a major collector or a minor collector in our circulation plan. And so the comment we received earlier about the, the street widths is accurate. When that property gets developed, that'll be something that needs to be in the design of a future subdivision. We're not incorporating anything right now. It's just the annexation of, of real property. And when a development comes in, those standards will be reviewed and enforced in accordance with our. and enforced in accordance with our circulation plan, our comprehensive plan, and our land use code, just to name a few. And then uh, the area meets or can meet existing infrastructure. There's two, there, there's a house on the property currently uh, being served by uh, the road right of way seventeen and a half road. This is uh, at, this road meets the criteria to provide access to a single family dwelling like it does currently. If the property were to be developed, like I said before, sidewalk extension, roadway improvements to meet the uh, the requirements of a minor collector, which is in our, our uh, circulation plan as quoted before. So all these can meet. Our city has planned for this. Uh, through our comprehensive plan, we can serve it with sanitary sewer, trash service, uh, municipal services like nine one one call center. They can go there. Police Department and the Fire Department, just to, to name a few. When we uh, send out an annexation for review, we send it to the, our industry partners like U Water, Excel Energy, uh, the Fire Department, uh, and um, Grand Valley Power, uh, C dot, we send it to everybody just to inform them, hey, this is what's going on. We also include the, the school district, so they know that, you know, certain property may or may not come in. There's a proposed density that, that could happen with the uh, with the zoning requirements that are further uh, included in the ordinance that I'll touch on uh, later to this. But these are all criteria that we need to consider even before we get to this meeting tonight. And so uh, staff has reviewed this in compliance with our comp plan and our land use code and find it to be uh, eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruita, and it meets those criteria or can meet efficiently those criteria. Um, here's a, a snippet from our GIS. That green line is the sewer interceptor. It's a ten inch uh, diameter main. There are several manholes along the way. Um, and so it serves up a valuable purpose for this project to come into the sear, this, this property to come into the city and provide um, it makes a, makes it logical approach to incorporate this into the city if they want to develop at some point. Um, as far as review comments and public comments, no reviewer expressed any concerns with this annexation, and we have not received any written public comments, uh, nor were any public comments received at the planning commission meeting last month. Um, the slide that, that didn't get in there is the recommendation from the planning commission. They voted to recommend approval by zero vote. That is in the cover sheet. Make it in the slide, and uh, staff does recommend and has a suggested motion in, on page one seventy of the council packet. Staff recommends approval uh, of this annexation ordinance. And I should note that annexation does include the adjacent seventeen and a half road right of way. Prior to uh, twenty twenty four, we were kind of just waiting for properties to start to develop, to incorporate right of ways. It makes a lot more sense in coordination with Mesa County to include those with annexations, transparency wise, it makes sense. And for a local infrastructure, uh, for us to do any projects that uh, we see in our capital improvements plan and our circulation plan to incorporate those rights of ways into the city as these properties get annexed. And so that's why that's in there as well in the legal descriptions with the ordinance. And so staff does, again, recommend approval of uh, of the assortments. We can open it up to public hearing if you'd like, Mr. Mayor, or I can jump into the rezone.
Uh, I think in terms of order, why don't we do rezone, open up to public comment?
Okay.
I actually would prefer you take public comments separately on each one. Sorry, Henry.
Oh, we should, it's just that.
As it is, and there are two different things. So one is.
So you're comfortable with us going through, we're kind of jumping around on the agenda?
Technically, there should have been a motion to amend it. So amend the agenda to flip these two. The reason I thi- think that um, Henry was trying to say this, they are in the wrong order is because the agenda through Muni Code creates these sections and puts quasi judicial all together and legislative all together, even though point of order really is to annex and then rezone, because you can't rezone if it's not annexed.
Did we do what you're suggesting?
We need to amend the.
Yeah.
Sure. If you would like to belt and suspend her, let's do it.
And the agenda.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, I move to amend the agenda to place um, legislative hearing for ordinance twenty twenty four fourteen uh, for the quasi judicial hearing, uh, item number two ordinance twenty twenty four fifteen. To put the order in from NS and then to rezone.
Second.
First and second. Any other comments?
Counselor Miller. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Perser. Counselor Parrish. Counselor Downs. Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you. Now that we have amended the agenda, we can follow the agenda order and open up it for public comments on ordinance twenty twenty four dash fourteen. Is there anybody that would like to participate in public comments? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public participation and bring it back to council.
Pretty straightforward.
All right. No comment or question? All right, then we would need a motion, which is on page one seventy.
Make a motion to uh, adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash fourteen, annexing approximately fifty three point five nine acres of property located nine fifty eight seventeen and a half road and adjacent seventeen and a half road right of way into the city of Fruita.
Second.
We have a first and second, bringing it back to council. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Okay, hearing none, would you kindly poll council?
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi. Counselor Perser. Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Downs. Counselor Miller. Motion passes six zero.
Right, with the amended agenda, we're gonna go back to uh, the ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen, the second reading and ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Fruita by zoning fifty three point five nine acres of property located in nine five eight seventeen and a half road to South Fruita Residential Zone, Carpree Zone. Once again, uh, Henry, you're still up.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, sorry for the confusion. Um. Yes, like you said, this is an ordinance, a second reading to zone uh, fifty three point five nine acres, which was original, which was just approved for annexation. Um, and take effect uh, for zoning of this application or this property to a South Fruita Residential Zone. Uh, I do like to include the legal notice, even though it's redundant, but for the record, um, I like to include it in the presentations. So legal notice for rezones is only required by local law, which is in our code. Um, fifteen days prior, and uh, again, we've met those uh, fifteen day minimum requirements prior to the planning commission uh, having a public hearing on this zoning application. We're required uh, to send postcards in a three hundred and fifty foot buffer area uh, inviting the public to participate if they do choose to in an application that's pending. In this case, it's a rezone. Uh, postcards uh, were sent out on July nineteenth. Signposting happened on July twenty second and uh, circulation in the local newspaper on July twenty fourth. Uh, you can see there's a, a clip or a picture on the, the right hand side, which shows the legal notice uh, signs that we put on uh, subject properties. Case no one's in the uh, buffer area or doesn't read the paper, but does pass by uh, on bike or foot or in a vehicle, they can certainly see that something is happening uh, in their municipality and uh, certainly want them to have public participation if they do choose to. Uh, the subject property is uh, nearly almost surrounded by the city of Fruita, um, mostly on the north side or northeast and northwest sides uh, with residential development occurring. Um, mostly on the northeast side with Adobe View and Adobe View North. And so you can see there's a, a number of different uh, zoning criteria, zoning areas in this, this uh, near the subject property, but what they're requesting is South Fruita Residential. So the South Fruita Residential is the recommended zone type in our feature land use map. Highlighted there is a star kind of showing the, the subject property location and uh, boxed out in the legend is South Fruita Residential with which develops uh, typically at a two to five dwelling unit per acre uh, density. So when we look at the review criteria, there's five uh, total criteria to consider. Uh, zoning compatibility with surrounding land uses. Um, that has been accomplished. South Fruita Residential is uh, the primary zone district on the south side of the interstate. Um, along with some uh, PUDs or planning developments, but in this case, we're talking about South Fruita Residential. And it's consistent with our city's master plan. Our city's master pan, plan and future land use map uh, do recommend that this area be zoned and developed at a South Fruita Residential um, at those criteria. And uh, again, the, the last one to consider is, is incidental with a, an annexation. Yes, they're running concurrently, so um, it is happening at the same time as an annexation application. So um, the criteria to consider on this aren't uh, as robust as a, an annexation application, but nonetheless uh, need to be considered and have been found by staff and the planning commission to uh, recommend approval to the city council for this ordinance tonight for a South Fruita Residential Zone. Uh, no review comments have been received and no written public comments have been received by staff at this time, nor were any uh, collected or presented at the planning commission meeting in August. The planning commission did make a recommendation of a six to zero yes vote to recommend approval to the city council for tonight's meeting. And staff does recommend approval of the ordinance to zone the subject property of fifty three point five nine acres to South Fruita Residential. And that suggested motion can be found on page one thirty nine of the council packet. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. I apologize, my voice is starting to go. Um, but with that, I'd like to open this up to public participat-
Mayor, if I may interrupt.
Please.
Um, I think first, please ask if the applicant would like to get up and say anything. Thank you.
Uh, is applicant here? And the applicant chooses not to. And the applicant appreciates you calling that out.
So now you can open to public.
All right, with that, now I'd like to open it up to public particip- public participation. If anybody would like to speak, please do so at this point in time. All right, hearing none, I'm gonna close public participation and bring it back to council. Any questions from council?
Just for clarity, um, you said there's five conditions to meet, and there was only three listed. So can you go over that for us, please?
Staff, I can go through them, yes. The presentation kind of consolidates the, the ones that kind of the highlights. Um, let me find it, and yes, we can go through that.
And more importantly, how many have to be met to move forward?
Yes, very good.
Okay.
The staff reports all look very similar. Um, so getting there.
Okay.
No worries.
We're patient.
There it is. Okay, perfect. I found it. Not all five, five criteria need to be considered. There's some and and or statements within the approval criteria. The first one absolutely has to be met. That's consistency. And and uh, city's goals, policies, and our master plan. So that one's been considered. That one uh, has been met. It's been in our future land use map for a number of years, not even this uh, future land use map, but the one prior to that. And the other ones are or statements. Um, does it meet number one? And or two, three, four, or five? So it does meet number five, which is the, the zoning amendment is incidental to the annexation, so they're running together. Uh, and so it does meet those two, but it does meet um, the comprehensive plan uh, and um, our future land use map and our, our policies, yes.
So Henry, the understanding correct, it needs to hit the main one and one extra, but it's hitting two extra.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And for clarification, what document are you looking at? What, what are you referencing right now?
Section seventeen point zero nine point zero seven zero of our land use code.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Uh, we would need.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen, amending the official zoning map of the city of Fruita by zoning approximately fifty three point five nine acres of property located at nine five eight seventeen and a half road to a South Fruita Residential Zone.
All right. We have a first and a second. Uh, any other questions? Sorry, guys. All right, with that, would you kindly poll? Pardon me?
It's gonna be a long night for you.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Perser. Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Downs.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Williams. Motion passes six zero.
Great, thank you. Uh, we have nothing on the administrative agenda, so we're gonna go ahead and move into our city manager's report. Mike, you are up.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just two items tonight. Uh, the first is uh, hopefully pretty quick, but to update the city council photos on the website and city link and those things, we are going to do those in-house. Uh, Ammon will take those uh, head, headshot photos and group photo of the city council. Uh, to capture the outdoor, yeah, you all requested those to be outdoors and to capture the right lighting and try and tie it to a council night. We'd like to schedule that for five thirty on October first. If that works for everybody. Otherwise, it gets too dark or it's not the right.
Very good with that? Not able to make it, I'll Photoshop.
That would, that would be uh, that would be a council meeting night, Tuesday night, uh, the first meeting in October, just at five thirty prior to the seven o'clock council meeting.
You'll let us know where?
We will meet out, we'll meet in Civic Center Park and then uh, go to any of the locations in the downtown area to take those photos, walk to locations in the.
You're gonna furnish t-shirts and all our proper attire that we should have?
Oh, yeah, last year we had our jackets. Like our Lokis.
Right, I, yeah, I, I, this is, this is beyond my uh.
It's a picture you wanna, like, in clothes you wanna wear.
We'll send information on what to wear.
Some recommendations, okay.
I didn't hear, are you available that night?
Uh, I can't say one hundred percent, but a ninety percent yes.
Right.
Last time you came squealing in, we, we worked around.
That's right.
We still got you taken care of.
Yeah, and then one more update. I was gonna ask our Parks and Recreation Director, Mark Mancuso, to give you a quick update on uh, direction you had given in a recent workshop on the pickleball courts at the Fruita Community Center. So prior to bringing that budget amendment at the next meeting on October first, we were able to obtain what the additional cost would be for those additional amenities. And so I was gonna invite Mark to just give you a quick update on that, so that you're aware prior to us bringing through the budget amendment through the process on October first.
Thank you. All right, thank you guys for having me tonight. Um, so I went back to Dare Case um, to talk to them about the additional items that you guys requested. Drinking fountain, um, landscaping trees. Um, and then after meeting with the local pickleball club, there were some additional items that needed to be changed to make that court uh, usable for tournaments. So uh, that was extending the, the in-lines from eight feet to ten feet. So uh, grand total came in at three hundred and twenty six thousand, four hundred and forty five. So we were originally at that two hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. So to add that, those features, uh, we did increase there slightly. What we can do is we can evaluate the cantilever shades if there is a different number you guys were looking at to try to come up with um, some different costs on that um, versus the ones that were specked out originally. So but we are sitting at three hundred and twenty six thousand for those courts.
Mark, do you mind breaking that down to what the different, do you have that information on what's the?
Yeah.
Fountain cost as opposed to the, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I have it broke down into different divisions. So general requirements, fifty nine thousand, nine hundred and sixteen. Existing conditions, nine thousand, two hundred. Uh, concrete was forty six thousand, three oh three. Uh, masonry, seven thousand, five hundred. Furnishings, twelve thousand, nine forty five. Shade structures, twenty six thousand, nine seventy five. Plumbing, eight thousand, six sixty three. And earthwork, one fifty four, eight twenty four. So.
Was the water fountain included in the plumbing?
Yes.
Water fountain didn't cost.
Yeah, the water fountain was cheap.
So uh, we are doing staff renovations at the FCC currently, and so we are working into that plan bringing water to the building out towards that area, so it's less um. So we are using the community center water for that drinking fountain. We will install different plumbing features so we can blow that out. It will not be available like our other fountains throughout the year. It will be seasonally.
The shade.
Sure.
Oh, the concrete, of course.
Yeah.
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 Hey, Mark, thank you so much for including the local pickleball, uh, pickleball people that I love when we include people that actually really do these things. Um, when you went to them and you talked to them about the new things and we found out that we needed to extend. So what was their response um to the idea of shade and, and the water fountain? Did they have a positive reaction or did you?
Yeah, they, they were just excited to be able to, I mean, this design has been in front of them before, so there was a few modifications that they wanted to see. So we didn't have gates at every location in the pickleball court. We left some openings just so you could go. They asked us to put gates there because the ball would roll through and create safety hazards. So instead of people would build certain things to put there to make sure the ball doesn't roll. Those were more of a safety hazard than the ball actually rolling. So just made a few, I mean, we went from two gates to six gates. So, um, but they were very appreciative. They did call me and ask if I could tear the whole thing out and do post tension concrete. And they would give us ten thousand dollars, um, which wouldn't cover hardly any of that. So I told them no, but thanks for asking. So. Yeah.
And just to, just to clarify, if you have other questions, that is, please ask, uh, but just to clarify, not asking you to take any action tonight. This will come to you at the October first meeting.
For that, thank you so much.
Great job, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That's everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, with that, we're going to move to council reports and action items. Would anybody like to kick us off? If not, I'm just going to pick on some, somebody. James?
Um, I, I wanted to say thank you for the tree being taken care of. Um, and I was hoping that Kim was here because I wanted to apologize for my tone last uh meeting. Um, while I was very passionate about it and I feel that that was appropriate. I do feel that I owed her apology for my tone. Um, other than that, I think that's about all I have today.
I think more information is coming up. I just wanted more FYI on October fifth. There's a Snooks Bottom cleanup that the Parks and Rec is um organizing or no, Parks and Rec Commission is organizing. Uh, so I think that'll be great. That'll be nice add-on to our, our branding.
Anything else?
I'm sorry, I did have one more. Um, oh dang it, what was it? There's a, there's so, no, no, there's a, there's a something we got invited to that's happening on the nineteenth.
This week?
Yeah.
It's the Masonic Lodge.
No, that's the twenty first. There's something that's on the nineteenth. I'm so sorry, I had it.
No, that's the twenty.
No, dang it. What, what? Oh, no, the CML, the CML, local CML.
Deadline meeting.
Here, the deadline's the nineteenth. And that's right. I wanted to bring that up because I feel like we should. Somebody should go and if we had talked about that or. Yeah, it's injunction. It's the regional CML and, and I wanted to see if.
Yeah, we have.
Did want to go and.
What is mantra?
The twenty sixth.
But we have to reserve by the nineteenth. Is that something we're wanting to do as a council? Do we need to tell Deb to?
Is anybody here able to go?
We've already registered a number of council that responded to Jen, Jennifer. Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't.
All you have to do is let Jennifer know via email if you're attending or not, and she will register you and get, or change.
Okay, perfect.
Can we know who is going?
I, yeah, I don't recall off the top of my head, but anybody that's told her.
I'm, I want to go. I have to.
All right. So we have at least two members going.
And that's what by tomorrow, we need to serve it, right? That the nineteenth, one.
No.
That, thank you. Sorry.
Janine?
Um, well, I'm curious about the letter that we all received about the Oaks Development. Is that something we should or should not discuss? I
There she goes. We know it's for you.
That was great.
Ask her.
Yep. Well, there was a few of them too.
I, anything that's an application that has not been um approved, even if it is administratively, I prefer that you don't talk about it.
Good. That's all I have.
And have we communicated with them that thanks for the letter?
Yeah, Matthew.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And so in this instance, this is administrative. Those letters should go to community development.
And can that be communicated? I, I think the proper process and where it's going and all of those things should be addressed to this community, just so they are, understand.
Didn't your email include that? No?
Not exactly.
Oh, okay.
So to that point, um, Mike and I had a conversation about this uh last week. I think it's in all of our natures to want to be responsive to people in the community. I mean, that's why we're doing what we do. I think sometimes where we put foot in mouth is in our eagerness to engage with the community. Sometimes we forget or don't know kind of for, for the process and also what maybe where and what.
Mayor, I'm just going to interject there and I'll just give a quick um sort of global process. Anytime you guys do receive comments on a pending land use application, those comments, just go ahead and um just respond back to that person that it is a pending land use application. You'll be happy to forward their comments. Um, you know, to whether it's planning commission, if it's administrative to comm dev, if it's, you know, coming to you guys, then obviously you can forward it to Deb to go in the packet. And just encourage them to come to the meeting, you know, that they can also of course, make comments at the meeting. If it's administrative, there won't be a meeting. But again, you'll be forwarding their comments to comm dev and just tell them if they have further comments they'd like to send in, send it to whichever is the appropriate approval body. So.
So if the, the email or correspondence comes to all members of the council, is there all of us should respond?
No, I think in that instance, um, if assuming when you say council, that includes the mayor, it would be the mayor's job just to respond back.
So two points on that. One is can you provide some suggested language to just email it to me? So.
Sure.
Since I do have a habit of putting foot in mouth, uh, that it gives me a framework.
Sure.
Yeah, with, and the second one was what Mike and I was talking about. Like I, I know I get sometimes confuses like what's where and what I can talk about, what I can't talk about. Does it make sense to have almost like a running list? That's easily accessible to say, here's what, what.
So all applications are put in the weekly update and on the website. So um every week, so all applications that are submitted to the city are put and all development applications are there. So if anybody.
To worry about. We see it on a Friday.
No, no.
It's like we don't see it until a Friday, but we get something on a, I mean, in theory, there could be a seven day gap there.
I think, I, I
Longer basis if it's a.
I think if it's a land use question, you, you should check before you respond because if it and I think if you have those kind of questions, you need to raise those to myself or the city attorney and or both.
Thank you.
I have nothing. Did I?
Um, I wanted to just highlight the sculpture walk that the Fruta Arts and Culture Board did. It was a great turnout and I also wanted to just say that the, at that same time, there was a community conversations and there was a film at PBS. I mean, there's three people arts, yeah, it was a big night. Um, but that's all I have. It was just wonderful celebration of those things.
Um, I just wanted to commend Parks and Rec on an amazing Reed Park opening. Um, it was really great and I heard so many good things from the community members and saw people posting videos and it was just really fun. So really well-run event um from start to finish and our farmer's market even stayed late because people were lingering there. So that's, that's exactly what I was hoping to see. So very well done. And I think that's all. Livability is doing a trail cleanup um next week. So that's what, that's what they're up to and um historic preservation is plugging along on um the history fair. Make sure you guys hit that up for Fall Fest. Don't miss that. Um, that's everything.
Just about Reed Park. Um, Colin and I were out walking last night around eight o'clock. We went down to Reed Park. People still there, like kids and young adults, all ages, like on the skate park and every, it just went, and then it was super cool. And the playground was awesome. And then like the moon, full moon was coming up and it was right between the hour of the playground. And anyways, it was just really magical and great to see that that is happening. And Matt said people, kids are there at six, six fifteen AM. All the time.
It is nice to see.
That's it.
Um, I can tell Clear Networks is doing work on the south side. Uh, I've been getting phone calls on that and I have been giving them uh Clear Networks' number uh in terms of if, with the concerns that they have uh on that one. Um, I'd like to get input from council. When we look at the towers where we have the two banners, there's the mountain biker and the dinosaur. The one on the east side is getting rather faded. Uh, and it's starting to show its age. I don't know how long it's, that one's been up there. But um I kind of want to get your feedback on asking Mike to work with his team to come up with some potential new designs. So we can get those.
Part of our conversation when we were, we, we wanted to wait until they closed on the, the property wasn't that?
In terms of, it's starting to get the design process done.
Yeah.
In terms of the fabrication.
Yeah.
All right. And just in terms of from a directional standpoint, not, I'll try not to arch direct, but kind of keeping with the same thing of a dinosaur and a mountain biker kind of is the.
Something different. Yeah.
I'd like to see something different.
Yeah, yeah.
Workshop.
Five three, council should be involved in also.
You know, I.
Tourism is the ones that handle the financing for that, don't they?
No, you guys handle the finance.
That comes out of ours and that was because of with the agreement which we have on those. Um, assuming that building closes, that comes before us.
Not that it can't include that. I just would like to see other things as well.
And that, those have been up there for a really long time. So it'd be really fun to mix it up a little bit, I think.
So what should that be part of what we ask the ad agency, the, that we're looking at trying to hire?
I'd have to stick with.
All right.
Hey, we'll, we'll bring some new options to you. Yeah.
All right. So that's it for me. And then because we have an amended agenda, we are going to need a motion to move to convene an executive session if somebody wants to read that language.
I, I move to convene into executive set session pursuant to CRS twenty four six four oh two four FL for discussing personnel matters, specifically the process for hiring the new city manager under pursuant to CRS twenty four six four B for the conference with, with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving le- legal advice regarding the same.
First, second. Any other questions, discussion?
Uh, if there is anybody you'd like to invite into that executive session besides myself, because I am invited.
Manager.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a first and a second.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parish.
Yes.
Counselor Downs. Counselor Miller, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor, I already asked you, right?
Okay. Passes six zero.
Everybody, I got lost. Okay, uh, can I suggest we take a five-minute bio break and then we'll come back at eight oh, we'll just call it.